Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number Thirteen, School Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. And Holla, if you would, do a read the roll, please, for a roll call.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Saverson?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Asamrai?
Here.
And Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you, Holla. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And first up on our agenda for this evening is the Highlander Highlights, and the board will honor North Park Elementary for being named a National Green Ribbon School. I'd like to read a little something about that if I might. North Park Elementary School has been selected as a U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School. North Park is just one of forty-six schools nationwide and three in the state of Minnesota to be honored for leading the way in reducing environmental impact, promoting health, and ensuring high-quality environmental education, education program, and that prepares students with sustainability skills and concepts. North Park Elementary School has been on an environmental stewardship journey to reduce its environmental impact and operational costs for many years. Its dedicated staff and students have committed to creating a learning environment that reduces the impact on the environment, improves student and staff health, and provides effective environmental and sustainability education. The awardees will be honored at a September ceremony in Washington, D.C. and receive a plaque. Congratulations, North Park. And I don't know, Jeff, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about the program? I know it's been going off for quite a while.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, thanks for inviting me up. Yeah, actually, this is something that, I mean, this is so many people have been involved with this over so many years, and most importantly, it's been the students that have carried it forward. We've been working on environmental education for a very long time, but it started way back even with the C Program fourteen, fifteen years ago. And we've always had a core of champions, of environmental champions at North Park, and that core has grown to really include pretty much everyone that's under that roof now. And it's, some of the big initiatives that we've had were composting. And that one, that took a couple of years to get going because it, the programming just didn't exist at the time. I know there was food to hogs, but that was something that we didn't want to do because it had its own carbon footprint impact. So we were able to work with county, with Commissioner Cordiak and Superintendent Kelly, and Allied Waste actually stepped up and, and they actually moved their, they opened a new composting pile in Blaine so they wouldn't have to transport with using diesel fuel all the way down to Rosemount. So we were okay with that. And I know back in Tom Foley's days, he came through with helping us out getting a sorting table. You know, and folks said, you know, kindergartners aren't going to be able to sort. No, actually, their parents aren't going to be able to sort, is what we find. The kindergartners do just fine. It's like when we have an event at night, you know, we bring out the sorting table and it's the adults that are, you know, where does this go? The kids are amazing. And Stan Maraz has really led the way in so many ways. And also, our first Learning Studio Group that are, just finished seventh grade this year, they're the ones that designed the mini blooming heights that we have in our courtyard, which was another factor that helped us out. And then just this year, we were able to, with a series of grants and an awful lot of, with an awful lot of gratitude, to put some solar panels on our roof. And so this carries forward also. Our students brought it to Columbia Academy, and they wanted to know, you know, Principal Burkus, Principal Busman, you know, Principal Fort, why, why don't we have a sorting table here? You know, why aren't we composting? And they have, have really helped to lead that spread throughout the district. And it's, I'm really proud of our students, I'm proud of our staff, and this was, was a nice, a nice award. It's something that, that really gratified us quite a lot.
Good. Well, maybe come up so we can get a picture. And the certificate says that North Park Elementary School is recognized for receiving the Green Ribbon School Award. Thank you for representing the Columbia Heights School District. So. Come on up. Good. Jeff?
Jeff?
Oh, I get it.
We should learn from this.
Thanks again, Jeff. Very exciting. One of forty-six schools nationwide, that's impressive. And I just chatted with Jeff when he came up. I, I remember when my kids were there, I mean, they'd been recycling for years. I don't know if we were, they were composting when my kids were still there, but I know that the, it's, it's been a program. I remember the Allied Waste, where do we put this stuff, how do we get it where it's going, conversations, so congratulations on moving that forward. Appreciate it. Next up would be the Agenda Approval Adjustments and Announcements. Look at first for an approval of the agenda, if I could get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Natty? Does any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements. June eighteenth, which is a Monday at seven PM, there will be a school board candidate orientation here in the community room. June nineteenth, Tuesday at five-thirty, school board work session. June twenty-sixth, at seven PM, a regular school board meeting. June twenty-eighth, it's a Thursday at seven PM, there will be a school board candidate forum held here in the community room. July fourth is a Wednesday and it's a holiday, Fourth of July, district office will be closed. August fourteenth is a Tuesday, and that'll be a primary election day. August twenty-first, which is also a Tuesday, seven PM, regular school board meeting. And August twenty-eighth at five-thirty PM, school board work session.
Chair Larkin?
Yes?
Are those days reversed? The twenty-first should be this work session and the twenty-eighth should be the school board meeting?
I think you're right, thank you. Yep, so the twenty-first at five-thirty will be the school board work session, and then the twenty-eighth at seven PM will be the regular school board meeting. Thank you, Lauren. Next up would be correspondent, Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Citizen employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Do we have anybody here to speak tonight on the blue sheets? Okay, we will keep on moving. Next up would be the Consent Agenda, the Approval of, which includes the minutes of the May eighth and twenty-second school board meetings and the May fifteenth work session. The Personnel Report, and then also the Treasuries Report for April 2018. If I can get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Lauren? Lauren, and then Molly? Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up, Discussion Reports, Information Items, Reports from Members of the Board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Since I always pick on everybody else first, I'll go first tonight because I get all these requests to wait and want to be last. So if I was at anything that I don't mention, you guys can throw my name in there there. I had the opportunity to attend the, the academic awards, which if you've never been there, I encourage you to show up even if you don't have kids. I think it was two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars were given out to our students, for the most part from local organizations. It's an amazing event. I'm talking with, I don't remember which district it was, it was someone close, but they were at one on, I believe St. Anthony, I believe, and they were talking about their fire department gave a thousand-dollar scholarship. I'm out of curiosity, I said, you know how much they gave? And they go, I don't know, it was maybe, you know, fifty, sixty thousand total. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but it was nowhere near the numbers that consistently come out of this district. So very exciting. I attended the High School Variety Show, and I'll comment on that briefly as well. One of the things about that show that I try to make it a point to attend is these are kids that are in a class, and the class is, what's the name of the class? It was Jill's class.
It's Communications.
Communications class. And the kids, as part of their grade, have to get up on stage and either lip sync or read a poem or do whatever it is that they choose to do. And these are, these aren't necessarily your theater kids or the people that are used to performing in front of people, and they get up and they do it, and they do it a phenomenal job. And I just, you see when they're done, the look in the eyes, that number one, they survived it, but actually how proud of themselves that they are. So it was a, an event that was, was actually, it was really fun. There was a, Heights Next had a Cheers for Beers fundraiser that I attended, and then we had the Theater Banquet. It was at Mersham Hall, I attended that as well. Had a chair meeting prior to this. And I think that's it for me, so. Laura, you good, going?
Well, we all attended the graduation.
Oh, shoot, thank you. See?
I was waiting.
Hope I missed that one, thank you.
It is, it is really, without a doubt, the greatest honor as a school board member is being able to attend the graduation. We really do have the best seats in the house, and seeing them, their faces light up is just absolutely phenomenal. And it, it's always such a great experience, and I'm so appreciative that, that I have the opportunity to participate. Now, I, then I also attended the nine-sixteen board meeting, that's a monthly meeting. We did settle the last two contracts for the union contracts, so we don't have to look at doing anything like that for at least another three or four months, which will be kind of nice. And as always, also attended the banquet for the band, Band and Choir, which is always a good time, very nice job by the Arts Foundation, Arts Booster Foundation. And I think that's pretty much it. Conversations and happy times.
Good. Holla?
Yep, so I have had conversations with many community members, attended the work session, and then the Silverwood Expressions. That was so much fun to look at all the artwork from all of our students. And then the academic awards ceremony, it was, it was mind-blowing to see how generous our community is and how amazing our students are. And then there was the high school graduation. That is the best honor, to be able to see, to see them come to the end like that and move on to bigger and better.
Good. Holla?
Yep, so I have had conversations with many community members, attended the work session, and then the Silverwood Expressions. That was so much fun to look at all the artwork from all of our students. And then the academic awards ceremony, it was, it was mind-blowing to see how generous our community is and how amazing our students are. And then there was the high school graduation. That is the best honor, to be able to see, to see them come to the end like that and move on to bigger and better.
Good. Holla?
It's been busy. So I attended the fifth-grade track and field day over at the high school, which was really fun. On a personal note, my last elementary event after many, many years at the elementary school thirteen at Highland. So that was an exciting day, though. It was really fun to see all the energy and all the teachers that put that on, do a great job. Also attended the academic awards night, and I just would echo what you guys have said. It's incredibly generous of our community to do what they do, year after year, and it keeps growing. Also helped out with the Highland fifth-grade class picnic over at Cordiak, which is always another fun event. We had some students participate in the section track meets. I also attended the track banquet, and Columbia Academy had their eighth-grade ceremony last week as well. That was also well-done. It was a lot of kids. I think that might be one of our biggest classes. I think it was two-hundred-and-sixty, which is significantly larger than what our graduating class this year's group was. So it's going to be exciting when they come up to the high school and have all that energy there, too. I also attended the graduation ceremony, and again, it's quite an honor. It was a really, really good ceremony with a great speaker, too. She did a really good job. And then I was at the all-night party for the graduates. They went up to the YMCA, and that was a lot of fun, a little bit exhausting, but fun. And I attended the city council meeting last night to recognize Ms. Tanya Moore, who is one of our parent professionals, and she does quite a bit of volunteering in the community. She was recognized as Citizen of the Year. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Guess I'll lead off with graduation. I know you've all said it, but it's really exciting.
Not all of us.
Not all, some of us forgot. But it's really exciting to be there. It's the, feels like kind of payday as a school board member, so to speak, to be there and to see all their faces. And this year I got to shake hands, the students were coming up on the stage, and it was crazy to think how nervous some of them were, given all they'd gone through to get there. Just getting up on that stage was the nerve-wracking thing, and I go, you've made it this far? And then they're like, oh, yeah. So it was pretty fun to just see them in that moment and be a part of that. What a special experience. I was at the chair meeting before this. Believe it or not, we still had baseball sections going since our last meeting, so I got to take in a few more baseball games. We just, many of us were just at the reception for the Employee of the Year. And so congratulations, and we'll, we'll get to that. I also went to the Scholarship Awards Night, and as a school board member, I was very impressed with all the things that our students are doing and all the things they're able to write about in their applications for these different awards. Many of the presenters who got to present, present the scholarships to the students commented on the things that the students were doing, and it was incredible to hear how many fabulous applicants they had for each award and then really be proud of the students they were able to give those awards to. And, you know, ninety, two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand from this tiny district is pretty incredible. And as a parent, that's pretty exciting, too. I've talked with many constituents and community members, have attended the softball and baseball banquets, also went to the eighth-grade recognition ceremony and saw that big class of people and they're big fans in that gym, tightly squeezed on a very hot day, was, was great. And then I'm not, is, was Silverwood in this last segment, Silverwood Expressions? Is that, have we already missed that, or?
If you went, we, I don't know if you remember, we went, but I can't remember when.
When it was, but that was also great. There was a, most notably, I saw a student do a spoken word performance, and I was having a conversation in the back of the room when she started, and it just caught my attention, and she was really, I'll, I'll remember that one. There's so many great arts and music, but that was really, I really thought she did a fabulous job. I think that's it.
My turn?
Okay. I attended the Silver Lakes Symphonic Winds Concert at Silverwood, and for those that don't know, that's a, a community band, so it's made up of adults mainly and some of our students in there as well. And what a great community band, they do a great job. So if you get an opportunity, they'll start performing again in the fall. Also attended a choir concert at the high school, and the Band and Choir banquet and the Theater Banquet. Also got to go to the baseball sectionals, so that was fun to support those students in their sectional ambitions. And was at the Employee of the Year reception, and then like everybody else, I don't want to continue to echo, but graduation, which is an amazing experience. And then lots of conversations with community members in the past couple of weeks.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, I do have a report tonight, and I do want to say a congratulations to all of our graduating scholars in the senior class for all the awards. At the scholarship, I, too, was there, and it, I've done that for many, many years, and each year it grows, as Molly said, and each year I'm amazed at the depth of talent we have in this district and the generosity of our community. I attended the graduation, I also attended the, at the high school, I attended the celebration at the eighth grade, and then I did Highland Elementary Kindergarten Ceremony, which was adorable. And so I wanted, each of those events were unique and special in their own way, and I was honored to be at each one of them. I want to do a shout-out to all the parent organizers of the graduating seniors all-night party, because I, it really takes a village to do that, and I know how much work it is. And the seniors, it's always thrills me when we wave goodbye, and then we, some of us stood on the sidewalk and waved goodbye to them as the, the fire truck and the police led them away in celebration. And, let me clarify that, in celebration, and a special thanks to them because they do that every year, and it's such a, it's such a legacy event. Tears in our eyes as we watched them go, and, and you did a great job with them at the other end, so. I enjoyed the senior walks this year, was the second year of graduating seniors to revisit their elementary schools. And we tried it last year at Highland, and it was so successful and so moving on the part of parents and students and staff that we decided that we would try it at all three buildings. And then Valley View put the frosting on the cake because they actually had a breakfast for parents and graduating seniors down there. It was, it brought tears to my eyes again, and there were a few other people crying at that event, too. Such a great legacy that I hope continues. We, the administrators are continuing to work with teamwork on the strategic roadmap, and so that is in process and that should be available to the school board in the very near future. There's been some initial negotiations, beginning just informational meetings with our cooks, custodians, clerical, and education assistants, and there'll be a closed session about that at the end of this meeting. And Summer Academy, if you haven't mentioned, noticed, in the morning or the afternoon, is in full swing now, and so traffic is, picks up a little bit on Forty-Ninth. We're glad, I think it's been about our fifteenth or sixteenth year of hosting them. And then the Columbia Heights Public Schools summer school offerings began today over at North Park. And so students are in gear, so it kicked off our, our summer school opportunities, and there's so many different summer learning opportunities for students that I am just proud to see all the teachers and the kids that are re-engaging in their learning in different ways. And I had multiple contacts with school board members, both in person or through correspondence, and that really concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'm glad you talked about the senior walk, as we was thinking about that as you were talking, so that was fun. That actually, Channel Nine showed up at one of the schools, I think.
Okay.
Did a news story on it, huh? I think it was at Highland.
I thought it was at Valley View.
Was it at Valley, I don't know, I just saw that, was it at Valley View?
It's saying yes.
Yeah, somebody goes, did you see this? I saw it on our Facebook page and stuff, and then somebody said, did you see it on the news? And I had not, so that was nice that it got some out-of-the-district recognition, so. Next up, we are going to recognize our Employee of the Year, and I'd asked Lindsey Bennett to come up. It's heavy. Don't worry.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, it's always a fun night when we get to recognize our Employee of the Year. This year we have Adriana Morales, who is an urban liaison at Valley View. She's been there since two-thousand-and-seven. And just a little bit about the Employee of the Year process, it, we accept nominations from community members, staff members, parents. We had about, I want to say about fifteen nominations this year. We pulled together a committee of staff members, the current employee of the year, we get some community members in there, too, and they look at all the nominations, we have criteria to base their decision on. And this year, we were so excited to go down to Valley View and surprise her before school started one day. Before Adriana speaks, Stephanie Kilpatrick, who was one of the nominators, is going to read some of her nomination.
Hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie Kilpatrick-Guerrero, and I've been in the play of Columbia Heights Public Schools for twelve years. Halfway through my first year teaching, Ms. Morales was hired, and the nomination that I completed really reflects the twelve years that she's been in the district as well, so. Ms. Morales is a strong, independent, professional bilingual woman of color that serves as a professional role model for all students, employees, families, and Columbia Heights community members. Anyone who has had the pleasure of meeting her will certainly never forget her infectious smile and positive energy. She was always happy to answer a parent question, connect with a student in the hallway, or reach out to a family on behalf of a teacher or an administrator. Without a doubt, she encompasses what it means to go above and beyond. Her can-do attitude inspires students to do their best in the classroom, families to get involved in the school community, and coworkers to stay positive even when times are tough. Although, pardon me, although a positive role model for everyone in our school community, she is an especially vital role model for our young female students of color. In her, they see that they, too, can master two languages, graduate high school, graduate college, be a professional, and raise a family if they choose to do so. In her, they see the potential of what their teachers are talking about when they say, work hard, study hard, dream big, and be yourself. In the current uneasy state of our country, especially for our communities of color, women, and international residents, Ms. Morales is a role model for our students that they, too, can strive up, strive to obtain a piece of the American dream, just like she has. As with any job, there are less glamorous or challenging tasks that one must manage from time to time, especially when working with students and families. Topics lacking, topics involving a lack of student growth, bullying behavior, truancy, or personally, personal family matters can be hard to discuss and problem-solve together. Throughout her employment with Columbia Heights Public Schools, Ms. Morales has and continues to demonstrate exemplary and professional behavior when in such situations. At times, Ms. Morales is interpreting for a teacher, administrator, or community service worker, but more often than not, she has stepped into the lead role of facilitator in order to resolve the difficult situation in a collaborative manner. Because of the safe relationships she has established with our non-native English-speaking families and students, many feel comfortable enough to share private information about their circumstances in order to support student learning. Discussing transitional housing, a lack of money for food and utilities, illiteracy, medical conditions, substance abuse, domestic violence, and undocumented family members are all difficult topics to discuss with anyone, let alone someone at your child's school. Yet Ms. Morales continues these and other courageous conversations in a sensitive and respectful manner in order to support the families in our community and, in turn, student academic success. Ms. Morales demonstrates Heights pride through a variety of hats that she wears throughout her day. Although officially titled urban liaison, she easily changes her roles to meet the needs of the students, staff, and families that she serves. On any given day when duty calls to be a secretary, a nurse, a transportation specialist, an administrator, a behavior interventionist, an interpreter, a recess monitor, a social worker, a teacher, a custodian, an advocate, a colleague, and most importantly, a friend. Over the years, she has taken time to learn about each and every professional role in our school in order to get to know what we do as well as do her job better. Familiarizing herself with everyone else's role has afforded her the opportunity to love and support our students and families, even if we ourselves cannot at times. Ms. Morales is always available, whether physically or emotionally, to lend a hand to those in need and continues to be a significant contributing factor to our school's success in building and maintaining strong relationships with our non-native English-speaking and immigrant families. She is the spirit of Heights pride at its best, and we are so very honored that she chooses to call Valley View her home.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I'm Adriana Morales, urban liaison from Valley View. School board members, Superintendent Kathy Kelly, coworkers, family, and friends. Miembros de la junta escolar, superintendente Kathy Kelly, compañeros de trabajo y amigos. It was hard for me to think what I would like to say tonight, thinking about what I represent, a Colombian Latina woman, proud single mother of two boys, but there, here I go. Fue difícil para mí pensar que diría esta noche, pensando en lo que represento. Una mujer latina colombiana, orgullosa madre soltera de dos muchachos, pero aquí voy. It was a year of many challenges for our family. We lost our house in a fire. This put us in a very challenging situation, living in a hotel for almost eight months, and everything that this situation could bring. We were blessed by all our friends, my coworkers, and our family. In Colombia, they all helped us. Fue un año de muchos retos para nuestra familia. Perdimos nuestra casa en un incendio. Esto nos puso en una situación de mucho reto, vivir en un hotel por casi ocho meses. Y todo lo que pudo traer. Fuimos bendecidos por todos los amigos, mis compañeros de trabajo, y nuestra familia en Colombia. Todos nos ayudaron. I thought about all this when they asked me what this award means to me, and I answered very confidently, it's not my award. I'm just part of a team. My boys, my coworkers, my family, my friends, and all they have allowed me to show the human being that I am. human being that I am. Pensé en todo esto cuando me preguntaron qué significaba para mí recibir este premio, y yo respondí muy segura: No es mi premio. Yo solo soy parte de un equipo. Mis hijos, mis compañeros de trabajo, mi familia, mis amigos, y todos ellos que me han permitido mostrar el ser humano que soy. I have been able to show that it does not matter what situation you are facing in life, you can always look ahead. This is what I want my boys to learn. I keep in mind, and this is my great teaching for them. Hepido mostrar que no importa los retos que estés enfrentando en la vida. Siempre puedes salir adelante. Esta es la enseñanza que quiero dejar a mis hijos. I would like to thank the two teachers, friends, and coworkers who nominated me, Stephanie Kilpatrick and Allison Thompson. Agradezco a las dos maestras amigas y compañeros de trabajo que me nominaron, Stephanie Kilpatrick y Allison Thompson. But there is someone very special that I always have in my heart, never leaves me, and marks every step of my life. God, thank God. Pero hay alguien muy especial que siempre tengo en mi corazón, nunca me abandona y marca cada paso de mi vida. Dios, gracias Dios mío. Thank you all. Gracias a todos.
Would you like to recognize, I know you mentioned your sons are here. Who else is here from your family tonight?
Yes, my family is here, my two boys, Dennis and Adrian, my dad, he came from Colombia, and my sister, and my nephew.
Welcome. Should be very proud of her. Very proud of her. I'd like you to come up if you would. We've got something really heavy. I don't know what to come with.
Thank you. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Standing, you stand until she's done.
Do one more round of applause, please. And I was explaining to your mother ahead of time that this is that awkward point where you feel like, should I stay at the meeting or should I go? And you are more than welcome to leave. I don't know if Casey's looking for any more pictures or you got what you want. It's whatever you want to do. I just told her you would be the, okay, just if he could get you out in the lobby there and get a picture with you guys, and then otherwise you do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. So thank you for coming and congratulations again. Okay, next up will be the introduction of the Director of Special Education, John Fry.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, it is my pleasure tonight to give the initial introduction to our new Director of Special Education, Dr. John Fry. He assumed his role in the district on May 7th, and so we thought it would be about time to give him a little taste of the board meetings. We're just really happy he's here. John comes to us from the Stillwater School District where he was the Assistant Director for Special Education over there. He's also been an Assistant Principal for Intermediate 287. He was a Social Studies and a Special Education Teacher in the Hopkins School District and a Special Education Teacher and Educational Assistant at Northeast Metro 916. And so that is a lot of hats to wear in the educational system, so he has a great understanding of what needs to be done in special education because he has played many roles himself. We're delighted that he's here, and I've just asked John to say just a few words. He'll be back at your next board meeting with governance questions for you, but for tonight, he's just going to say a few words. So, John, if you would.
Thank you. Chair Larkin, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for the nice warm welcome. I sent an email to staff last week to thank them for the great welcome that they've given me, as well as just kind of the stuff that I've seen encouraging and the enlightenment, the enlightened work that I've seen that they've done on behalf of students. It's been great to see. And yes, I did also attend the graduation, and it was joyous. It was fun. It was great to see, and what a, what a great culmination of, of hard work and dedication by those students. Just wanted to briefly share some kind of a focus that I'd like for the, for this year, at least from my perspective. You know, we're going to be expanding the Anchor Program to Columbia Academy, which I believe Dr. Holt shared earlier in May. And I'm excited about that and supporting our work with students and expanding that support here in Columbia Heights. We're also expanding our transition focus to really work with our ninth graders, to really have a trajectory for graduation and to support and encourage them with our special ed programming. We're also expanding our pre-K and early childhood program with some co-teaching here at the Family Center. So we're going to have a co-taught class with our early childhood Family Center teacher and an early childhood special ed teacher. So I'm excited to support the work in, in providing that option for students. And the other thing, at least from my perspective as a Director of Special Ed and what I'm hoping to doing, is to share information specific to best practices in special ed as well as compliance. I know that's a very exciting topic for many of you. As well as, the second thing I'd like to also do is to build relationships. How do I support people in building the relationships with our students through my work with them, as well as providing a positive identity? How do we identify ourselves as great teachers and to really encourage ourselves? And one thing that I asked the staff to do was to reflect on what has gone well this year, but also to reflect on what we can do better and, and for next year, as well as what can we do to live in our greatness as great teachers and great educators? And I'm excited for this opportunity and about the future. We've got, you know, the trajectory's up, and I'm looking forward to continuing that. So thank you again, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. You guys have been very warm and welcoming, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm super excited.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody have any quick questions for John? We wait till next week and let them have it.
I, I just want to say welcome. I'm, I'm very glad that you're here. Your reputation preceded you a little bit. I, I do some, I'm the board member of 916, so I've heard, I've heard your name a couple times.
Oh, I, I, thank you, Ms. Palmer. My, that's good. I'm glad the rumors that I started spreading came over here. That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just let them know that the check's in mail.
Yeah, okay, great.
Welcome.
Great, thank you. And 916 is a great partner, and, you know, Dan and Eddie and the folks over there, very supportive.
Thanks for leaving me high and dry, being the only one that didn't remember they were at graduation last week, by the way. So, welcome, John.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Welcome, thank you.
Next up, personalized learning initiative updates.
Chair Larkin, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, we're excited this evening to give a maybe not-so-brief update on personalized learning. I guess I'm infamous for not brief, but we'll really try. So this evening, we're going to talk about personalized learning in Columbia Heights for the 17-18 school year. As always, creating worlds of opportunities for every learner and focusing in, everything that we do focusing in on our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So in talking about personalized learning, I'm going to kind of just hit the highlights of this and let Zina talk about the next slide, go into a little bit more detail. But for personalized learning, it is talking about a one-to-one device program. We do, we did implement additional tech integration support to help with this program and provide that additional professional development that's needed and kind of changing the way we're doing things in the classroom. And we're measuring this progress by our Bright Bites Clarity Tool. And so again, we're talking about differentiated instruction, formative assessment, engagement, flexible tools in the environment, and all, of course, for that college and career readiness goal.
So personalized learning in Columbia Heights has been a true collaboration among the departments, be it around looking at standards, looking at professional development opportunities. We really have been collaborative since the inception of personalized learning when we started with iPads in sixth grade. So this is a document that has been developed to really push forward, and I think Leslie will mention leveling up our, our practice and our work as we've learned a lot along the way, as, as we grow and expand and continue. So the heart of personalized learning is really shifting from that whole group, one-size-fits-all, everyone in rows, everyone doing exactly the same thing, teacher-directed, to more of a student-centered approach that really balances that group instruction and the individualized learning. So that includes choice is a really big component of personalized learning. We're looking at students' abilities and their interests in, in some of the choice Another component of personalized learning is pace of instruction, so that timing of, of the content and students are able to move. They're not all necessarily moving at completely different paces, but really paying attention to what pace is working for that student. Then their path. All of our students have a guaranteed curriculum. All of our students have to master the same set of standards. But through the personalized learning, we can provide the different paths where students can demonstrate the mastery of their learning in unique ways. The mode, how are they demonstrating that mastery? And then a huge component is data. So one, teachers having access to quick data that they can look at progress along the way and make those adjustments that they need. Teachers looking at data as a team, finding new ways to, to have deeper data and hone in on specific skills, all of those different pieces so that we can implement the entire personalized learning initiative.
All right. So the Bright Bites Tool, just as a reminder, so there's a frame, it's a framework. We're talking about four areas or four pillars. We're talking about the classroom. We're talking about access. We're talking about the environment, and we're talking about skills. And we're talking about this in both students and teachers. So one of our focus areas, we've talked about it a lot over the last eight, 10 years now, talking about the four Cs. You know, we have life skills that we've adopted as a district, focusing in on those life skills, and, you know, really overall access for our students, equitable access. And this is our fourth year of using this same tool. So now we have four years' worth of data, and we can really start to trend things, what's working and what's not working. So at the bottom, you can see the, the score legend. And so as we're looking through these things, we talk about, you know, what colors, what the colors mean within the framework. So that gray is that beginning area, or that, and the pink is that emerging area. So we're, you know, we're getting out of that beginner stage. We're starting to learn. We're starting to grow. The orange or yellow, whatever you want to call that color, is where you're proficient. So obviously, we want to minimally be proficient, but, you know, obviously, we're shooting for higher in that advanced and exemplary stage. So when we pull the data, and this is our, kind of our starting point, this is what the case framework looks like. It breaks down into those four key areas, and it just kind of gives us an overview of how we're doing in those areas. So this is kind of our starting point, and this is where we start to drill into the data. And Leslie will, will get into that detail information at the elementary, middle, and high school level in a minute. So just to talk about participation, we, you know, we know how many, who, how many people we're surveying at each level. You can kind of see there, we have definitely statistically significant data at every level, and there's a benchmark, depending on the number of staff, depending on the number of students. And so, you know, we can, we can't even look at the data until we meet that statistically significant data point. So these are just the numbers that took the survey at each level. So again, that data focus on the four Cs, our students using technology, our teachers gathering data using that technology, you know, those four Cs, that collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and communication, those technology skills. One of the biggest things we've learned over time with personalized learning is how important those foundational skills are. And just because they're digital natives doesn't mean that they know how to use technology for a tool for learning. And so that is one of our big focus areas this year when we're talking about digital citizenship with our students. And I think our data will show that we're making headway there. You know, in the professional development, do teachers feel supported? And are they getting the PD they need? So again, in this framework, this is this year's, two of our highest areas of growth this year were in the classroom quadrant on digital citizenship under the students. So very happy about that being a significant growth area. And, and then online, teachers using, teachers' online skills. Again, that foundational skill base with our teachers, and I think that's showing the professional development that we're doing is getting them going the right direction. And I don't have the score up there to show, but we grew by 22 points this year for overall proficiency, and, which is a very significant growth. And anywhere from three to five is a statistically significant growth, and we grew by 22 this year. So we're, our score right now in the overall framework is about, is 1079 as a district, and we have about 30 more points to go to get into that next stage. But we're at the upper level of that. So the bottom level is, is 1,000. So, you know, once we get to 2,000 or 1,100, then we're in the next stage. So we're really close to that next stage. So we're going in the right direction. We feel very good about that overall score. Now, that doesn't mean there's not areas for growth. We'll talk about some of those. But very happy about that. So this year, some of our focus areas, we, we did increase tech integration. We had a tech integration specialist that was focusing on the special ed area. And I think that team worked very well together, and I think, again, that data shows that team worked very well together, and we saw a lot of gains this year under, boots on the ground with, with Leslie, the personalized learning facilitator. That rebooting that tech integration or that technology leadership committee within the district, I think, was a huge success for us. And one of the biggest things that came out of that, of that reboot of the K-12 outcomes for technology. So again, having tangible things that the teachers can focus on, I think, has been, has been a key. And this year, knew all of our teachers had a technology goal, and we're looking for new things with that next year, we'll talk about later. But again, being intentional and focused in this area. So I think now I will turn it over to Leslie, and she'll kind of go through the data points.
Sure. So we'll start with elementary and work our way up. This year, the one-to-one device access level maintained at grades four and five. Last year, that was the same. They had one-to-one devices in those grade levels as well. And I'm very pleased to share with you that we did see an increase in student digital citizenship and also in the teacher online skills, so that parallels the growth that we have as a district. To speak a little bit more specifically about that digital citizenship piece, these are two data points that reflect that growth. Elementary students are learning with a higher frequency now about how to share information about themselves online in a safe way and creating a positive digital footprint for themselves. So that speaks both to their digital citizenship and their online safety. So we're very pleased that the students are learning with more frequency how to do that in a safe way. Academically, they're also learning digital citizenship skills by increasing the frequency with which they're taught how to cite online information correctly. So again, speaking to that digital footprint, we want them to be able to cite others' work in the correct way that gives credit where credit is due. So we're pleased to see growth both socially and academically because both are very critical towards the digital citizenship complete package, so. These are two data points that we track every year at all levels. We track the frequency of student computer use in the classroom, holding pretty steady at almost daily. We're very pleased to see that maintained throughout our elementary schools. We want the technology to be a regular part of the classroom. online skills. So that parallels the growth that we have as a district. To speak a little bit more specifically about that digital citizenship piece, these are two data points that reflect that growth. Elementary students are learning with a higher frequency now about how to share information about themselves online in a safe way and creating a positive digital footprint for themselves. So that speaks both to their digital citizenship and their online safety. So we're very pleased that the students are learning with more frequency how to do that in a safe way. Academically, they're also learning digital citizenship skills by increasing the frequency with which they're taught how to cite online information correctly. So again, speaking to that digital footprint, we want them to be able to cite others' work in the correct way that gives credit where credit is due. So we're pleased to see growth both socially and academically because both are very critical towards the digital citizenship complete package. So these are two data points that we track every year at all levels. We track the frequency of student computer use in the classroom, holding pretty steady at almost daily. We're very pleased to see that maintained throughout our elementary schools. We want the technology to be a regular part of the classroom experience for kids. We want them to be familiar and comfortable using technology. So we're pleased to see that they are regularly using technology with their teachers. With the personalized learning components that we talked about, path, pace, mode, that data piece is really important for informing teachers' instructions. So a major component of that is the formative assessment piece. So we want to track if teachers are administering digital and online assessments to their students to gather that data and then help them make choices about how they're going to continue their instruction. I will say that at our elementary level, we are implementing a number of new curricular programs. And some of those have digital assessment pieces that haven't fully been integrated into the classroom yet. So we think that's why we are seeing a little bit of a dip in that at least weekly. Still very pleased to see that the online assessments are happening regularly and that we're also seeing a drop in never. Those are all positive things to note about that.
And I just wanted to note that the striped is last year's data and the solid is this year's data. So when you're looking at that, that's how that's.
Thank you. We have two areas of growth that we're looking at specifically for elementary. One is we want teachers to start asking students to use an online space for documents. What this translates to more specifically for our students is using things like Google Drive to stash their documents and slideshows that they're creating. This ties into those K-12 technology outcomes that we developed with our teaching staff this year. It started with our technology leadership committee and then we revised it with our teaching faculty as a whole. So it's a very authentic, organic document that was created by our teachers in our district for our students. And those outcomes specifically outline skills that we want our students to graduate with. And speaking to that college and career readiness, we want to make sure that they're also ready with technology as well. So we've outlined very concrete technology skills that we want to foster in our students. One of them is learning to organize their work online. Another one we want them to work on fostering is creating multimedia presentations. So being able to integrate video and photo in with text and present their ideas clearly. So we are seeing some growth in this area, but now especially with those newly revised tech outcomes, we're excited to see some growth in this area as well. We've already started to see some here at the end of the year and we think it'll continue to grow. So looking ahead for our elementary schools, we are going to continue fostering that technology fluency, looking at those technology outcomes and letting that kind of guide how teachers are encouraging the technology skills and fluency with their students. Looking ahead for professional development, the teachers have an opportunity in their survey to express interest in certain professional development topics. And these are the top four that the elementary staff has requested. So they're looking at how can we create an efficient and effective classroom environment with technology and that classroom management component? And then what can I use to foster critical thinking and collaboration in those multimedia technology skills? Moving up to the middle band of our students, we have some specific data for Columbia Academy. This was their third year with all grade levels being one-to-one with devices. Also this year, they had some technology integration support that was absent last year. And this building is especially excited to be transitioning towards Chromebooks as a device. This year, sixth and seventh grade had Chromebooks and eighth grade had tablets. Next year, all grade levels will be Chromebooks.
And this is actually a PE class using technology?
Yeah. We did see some increase in the teacher use of that four C. So we are seeing an increase in our Columbia Academy teachers working on fostering that communication, collaboration, creativity and critical thinking. We also see that parallel growth with our district with increase in teacher online skills. And we saw a big jump this year in the support for our teachers. And part of that was the designated technology integration support and just continuing to grow and how we support those teachers in that building. Again, we track this frequency piece with all of our schools. Again, the solid is this year, stripes is last year. We did see a jump in almost daily use of computers in the classroom and we are seeing some more tapering off and some of the less frequent things. So that shows us that technology is showing up very regularly in the students' day, which we hope is fostering authentic technology fluency. As they use it more for class, we're hoping they're also learning those academic tech skills. Also, we are seeing, holding steady for digital and online assessments. We're seeing an increase in monthly and a decrease in some of those less frequent categories. So that shows us that yes, those digital assessments are showing up more frequently in our Columbia Academy classrooms. One area for growth that we're going to track going forward for Columbia Academy is asking students to write online. This speaks both to student digital citizenship and creating a positive digital footprint and those K-12 technology outcomes, teaching kids to write using online tools. This graph is slightly different. The solids are what the students reported and the stripes are what the teachers reported. So we do see a little bit, the biggest difference is over here in the never side of things. Many teachers are reporting that students are never writing online and we did see that go down with students, which means that somewhere in their day, they are doing it. Whether the teacher, these specific teachers are asking them to, students are reporting that yes, they do write online. So there's a slight difference there. Another area for growth, going back to similar to what we were asking for, elementary students looking at, asking students to use an online space for documents. We think this will also continue to grow as student, more students are using Chromebooks. That's where documents are stored when you use a Chromebook. So this will also continue to grow. Looking ahead for Columbia Academy next year, we're very excited that we'll have device uniformity across all grade levels. It's been a slight challenge as we've had some grade levels with one device, some with another. So we're very excited to have uniformity across the board. They'll continue to have their technology integration support. And then their top four asks for a PD for the coming year include that classroom management, the critical thinking, multimedia and online writing. And our oldest students at the high school are in their second year of one-to-one in the building. This year, they actually expanded two grade levels. Last year, we had only one-to-one in ninth grade. This year, we had nine, 10 and 11, all with one-to-one Chromebooks. And it's also their second year with designated technology integration support.
This is one of my favorite pictures. Leslie will attest to that.
Yes.
This is Google's augmented reality. It's something new. We've had them out in our district. So that's just a picture of a tornado from above and the students on the other side, you can see them in the background. So can you explain that just a little bit?
It was an exciting event in our school. In April, we applied to be part of the augmented reality tour with Google's Pioneer Program. We already own a Google Expedition kit that allows for virtual field trips, but this augmented reality allows students to examine objects in three dimensions. So this student was able to look above, below, inside the tornado. And it was exciting to be part of that pilot program that Google was running. And we were part of their tour and we got to have students from Highland and the high school participate. I think dozens of students all day got to experience this really exciting new technology. There's a lot of change in the data for the high school. We did see an increase in student access, which is of course mirrors the growth in one-to-one devices. We saw a slight decrease in teacher use of the four Cs. Other positives we saw were increases in digital citizenship and assessment, foundational skills for teachers. We did see a slight dip in professional learning. It's another data point that we'll be tracking. Speaking again to that digital citizenship piece, we have the social component and the academic component. We saw excellent growth in the social side of it where teachers are more knowledgeable now than they ever have been about creating an online presence that's a positive digital footprint. So we're pleased that our teachers are knowledgeable in a topic so that they can share and guide and advise our students as they're doing that. Academically, teachers are also growing in their knowledge of legal use of web content. We want our students to use others' work legally and we want them to cite it properly. And so we're pleased that our teachers are growing in their knowledge so that they again can teach our students those skills. We are seeing growth in digital assessment for the students. Again, as we see the increase in technology that avail, that is available to the high school teachers, we're pleased to see that they're using that technology to gather the data on their students so that they can inform their instruction. We are seeing also more growth in frequency of computer use in the classroom. Again, as the more students have the one-to-one devices, the teachers are asking them to use technology more regularly. So we're pleased to see that the technology we're providing is being used well in the classroom. This again is a slightly different graph. It's not showing progress over time. It's showing a comparison between students and teachers. We are seeing a lot of our students that are asked to use an online space for documents. Fifty-five percent are reporting that they're doing that weekly, whereas the teachers don't report the same number. And that could just be a discrepancy in which teachers are responding to our survey. It's also difficult to gauge from the teachers because the students have multiple teachers throughout the day. So for this data point specifically, we're looking at what the students overall are being asked to do rather than class-specific. Looking ahead, next year, we're excited that the high school will be entirely one-to-one. Twelfth grade will be joining the one-to-one program next year. They will also continue with their technology integration support. And the teachers have asked for these top four professional development topics moving forward. Looking ahead for our district overall, we're excited again to be one-to-one in grades four through 12 next year. We're also looking forward to some exciting things in our professional development offerings for teachers. We're going to continue our work with the technology leadership team. That group was amazing this year with their work on the K-12 technology outcomes. And it was such an important part of our work in the district to have that teacher voice because they're the ones in the classroom with our students. So we were really excited to have their voice be part of the conversation as we plan for the future. Tying in with that professional development piece, we've set ourselves this district technology goal for all buildings and teachers to quote-unquote "level up" their technology fluency and/or technology integration strategy. Looking forward for our goals for professional development and personalized learning in the district, we want this to be something that is sustainable and that matters over time. We want it to be attainable for teachers and we want it to make sense for our district. So in order to do that, we've set this goal that allows teachers to move just one step forward at a time. We're trying to meet everybody where they're at because we know we have some teachers that are ready to make huge steps with technology. And we know that we have teachers that are needing a smaller-sized step. And we also know that we have a lot of different interests with technology. So we're excited to have this technology goal for ourselves that allows the teachers to personalize their learning as well and model that personalized learning for our teachers so that they can take those steps that will then trickle down to their students. And then of course, we're looking forward to continuing our collaboration with the teaching and learning department and the peer reviewers to leverage that goal setting to encourage growth with our teachers and with our students.
So I know that was a lot of data, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, we talked about some of the things that are working, some of the things that we need to look at and you know, talk about the discrepancies between the students and the teachers' data in the same data point. And we really are diving into and looking at and looking to the future and growing in these areas that we need to grow in. And this is a initiative that is largely funded through the capital projects levy that was passed in 2014. So you know, we want to ensure that everybody knows that, you know, where we are with it and that we are really measuring what's happening and we're, we're growing. Any questions for us?
No?
I'm glad to see you're consulting with the teachers then on what they hope for their personalized, their own personalized learning so that they can continue to grow. I wrote down that question. What are you doing for PD for teachers? And then you told me. So I thought, oh, great. Now I don't have a question.
Always so impatient.
I know.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for coming in and sharing that information.
Thank you.
Next up would be the out-of-state and overnight field trip.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Principal Fellows and I are here this evening to present, annually, we come and present overnight and out-of-state field trips. Tonight, we're presenting one overnight field trip.
In-state?
In-state?
An in-state field trip, yes. So from virtual field trips to in-person field trips, right? So of course, we are here to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And the core values really focus on excellence and collaboration. And I'd also like to add courage when we're talking about elementary students stepping out there to learn, have new experiences overnight.
Could we add courage to the teachers who are taking the fifth graders overnight?
Very courageous as well. So this evening, we're presenting the information. This will come back to you as a governance item. So on June 26, we will be asking the board to approve the overnight field trip. So of course, field trips in general are deeply based in research that they're positive. They help enrich kids' critical thinking skills, historical empathy, tolerance, just an overall long-lasting experience with kids. It's a different kind of learning. Can learn more outside of the classroom or learn in a different way. So with that, Principal Fellows?
So this whole proposal came about, first of all, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thanks for having me here tonight. This came out of some of the conversations we had at the community forum with the parents and teachers. And they were asking about what kind of experiences can we offer some of our kids that would be unique and outside of the textbook? And so we got to talking with some of our fifth grade teachers. And this was something that they threw out there, said, is this possible? And I said, I don't know, but we should find out. And this is more about the process to earn the field trip and earn the experience. This is something that we feel will unite our grade level and come together. It's something that everyone will earn individually and as a group and hopefully unite our fifth grader and have a, fifth graders and have a common goal in mind. The experience itself that we're looking at is to provide multifaceted field trip experience to fifth grade students as an extension of the elementary core curriculum with hands-on opportunities while learning skills to be a productive and collaborative team member with peers. And it is in Sandstone, Minnesota, the Audubon Center of the North Woods. The features include informative and interactive classes led by professionally trained staff, full array of adventure programming, collaboration, camaraderie, critical thinking, creativity, and experience and learn about the environment in a variety of wetlands, forests and prairies. And of course, as Stenvick mentioned, the importance of educational field trips. According to a U.S. travel study, students who take educational trips have better grades, higher graduation, graduation rates from high school and college. And the study cited the importance of experiences for disadvantaged students as they provide unique opportunities to level the classroom playing field. And so the proposed trip is, would be next spring, 2019, all fifth grade students will travel to the Audubon Center of the North Woods in Sandstone, Minnesota for three days and two nights. And they offer customizable programs focused on team building, wildlife training, cultural history, Minnesota ecology and STEM renewable energy practices. And we don't have a date yet because we're knocking on wood for approval. The funding for the fifth grade field trip would be $112 per student and that would include for all three days and two nights, the adult chaperones free per 15 students. We would include the fifth grade fundraising and that would start off in fall 2018 immediately if, if approved. And then grants and scholarships would be available for application depending on what we're looking at as far as approval goes here. And then we'll be looking for local support through donations and then PTO contributions as well.
So as I mentioned before, we're here to bring you the information this evening and we'll be back on the 26th seeking approval.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I'll go first because it may be quicker. Sorry. Sorry. I'm just curious, is this just Valley View students or are we looking at all fifth graders across the district?
I'm, I would only take Valley View students.
I didn't know if there was any kind of collaboration.
Oftentimes when we have a new program, we like to start with one school first.
Thank you. Can you clarify the $112 per student? That would be the, something that the student would pay. Is that correct?
So we're seeking to fundraise and get donations and scholarship students. So just like with any of our field trips, finance, finances would not be a barrier to attendance and participation in the field trip.
But this isn't something that we're looking to add to our operating budget?
No.
It would be through fundraising and other, other means?
And we, we're looking at having a collective grade level goal of, for funds raised instead of looking at it per student. And so that, that's where some of the project learning would take place during the fall.
And does that include transportation costs?
It does not.
So that would be additional.
And then I do have PTO's verbal commitment to help out with the trans- And then I do have PTO's verbal commitment to help out with the transportation costs.
And there are funds set aside for each school designated for field trips and transportations for field trips already.
One other question, some of the, the goals and the learning objectives of this type of field trip, does that align with the, the fifth-grade curriculum and learning goals?
It aligns specifically with the science standards. The Valley View science teacher's been heavily involved in seeking this opportunity for the students, and has conferred with my department and worked with through our administration. So, that's, that's the angle where it's taken. It's really heavily focused on science.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week?
About two weeks.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Two weeks. Okay. Next up, the S of grants.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, this evening, I'm here to present what will be preliminary budgets for Title I, II, and III. Of course, we're here to create worlds of opportunities for every learner, and really looking at integrity, innovation, and excellence as a part of our core values. I'm here this evening to present information to you, and this will be back on June 26 seeking approval. So, last week, the Department of Education released what will be, what are projected and preliminary funding streams for Title I, II, and III. Now, for Title I and II, I'll go into the details of what that means, but I just wanted to explain that the way that this federal money is allocated across the nation, it's really, they really, the federal government looks at how states in general are, are, how economically strong states are. And those states, such as Minnesota, who have a more of an economic boom compared to other states in the, in the union, receive less funding accordingly. So, we have a small tick down in Title I and II, and that has nothing to do with our district per se. It's the state of Minnesota received less federal funding in these areas. I just wanted you all to know that. So, with that Title I, the purpose of Title I is to ensure that all children have a fair, equal, and significant opportunity to obtain a high-quality education and reach at a minimum proficiency on challenging state academic achievement standards and state assessments. So, the key activities include, or are determined by school personnel, a district team that includes parents and community members, teachers, and administration. And that's ongoing throughout the year, and then through a pretty significant meeting in early August. So, the key activities for Title I include funding for elementary science. So, this is, again, supplemental. Typically, an elementary classroom teacher could teach the science lab and teach the science content with his or her licensure area. Columbia Heights has a long tradition of going above and beyond that and supplementing, using this funding to have our science specialists in the elementary level. And then interventions for math and reading, we are really ramping those up based on where the needs are. Parent involvement, this evening, we saw one of our wonderful liaisons, Adriana Morales, here, and part of her salary and benefits is funded through this, this budget. Other parent engagement activities, our continuous improvement strategies, a small portion of all of the funding that goes to support students who are homeless or in foster care comes from this funding, and then mandatory support for our non-public within the district. So, let's take a look at the projected numbers. So, the preliminary, preliminary allocation for 2018, 2019 school year, as you can see, is $875,891. We need to anticipate a potential 10% sequestration. We were lucky enough this year that that 10% was not taken back, but we always have to plan for that just in case. We never know if, and they warn us to plan for that. This year, we're, we've been in transition mode between No Child Left Behind and...
Could you explain what sequestration is, please?
Oh, sorry. So, sometimes when, for school funding, funding flows through the Department of Education in Minnesota, and based on the, the needs or decisions at that level, there, some of our funding can be taken back and flows back to the state. So, it's really important to me to budget wisely and carefully and prepare for anything. And so, I set aside this 10% for that potential of the money being taken back. So, it's, it doesn't happen with all of our budgets, but this is one, when we go to the annual meetings, that we, we need to plan for.
Okay. I'd just like to add that if the Congress doesn't set a budget, and all of a sudden, there's a problem at the federal level, they can use the sequestration strategy as well to backfill on the budgets. The Minnesota Legislature did that once when they couldn't pay their bills, and they kind of just took some money away from the school districts. It's the same thing, kind of, kind of, sort of, but only at the federal level.
We are, for Title I, allowed to carry up to 15% for each year. This year, we're, the projected carryover is slightly smaller than last year. However, it's pretty healthy since there was no sequestration. So, what does the funding go towards? By and large, staff, teachers in the building, their salaries. We also have non-licensed staff that this funding goes towards their salary, funding for supplemental curricular materials. So, this can't be part of the core curriculum. So, anything that's our intervention or additional supplemental. At least 1% of this funding is required for parent involvement. We, of course, spend, and, and a lot for, far more than 1% for, for each of our schools. As I mentioned earlier, a small portion of home, support for homeless and foster care. This isn't by any means the entire budget that we use to support them. This is just a small portion of that. Administrative support, the required funding for Immaculate Conception, our non-public school, and then the indirect costs, which are some of the billing, billing and managing costs. I'm going to move to Title II. Title II is federal funding that is really used for professional development, for teachers and administrators. And again, similarly to Title I, the use of these funds are determined by that, a team of folks, school, district, parents, teachers, and administrators. So, the professional development that Title II covers includes coaching for literacy and math and mentorship, training sessions for administrators and leaders, literacy and math, of course, culturally relevant instruction, professional learning communities, and then consultative services through early college and leadership and others. Of course, our, the mandatory support for non-public professional development as well. So, the projection for Title II, as released last week, is $141,537. It's much smaller reserve for that potential sequestration, and anticipated carryover from this year is $21,000. There's no limit on to, we could carry 100% over if we wanted to, but we really want to utilize the funds in a, in a well-planned manner. So, as you can see, the breakdown is really professional development for Columbia Heights Public Schools, professional development for the non-public, and then that indirect cost. Moving to Title III, Title III is a little bit different. The funding formula is really based on per English learner student in the district, so per students who qualify for English learner. The funding is to ensure that English learner students and immigrant students attain English language proficiency and meet challenging state academic content and student academic achievement. With Title III, it's pretty cut and dry, very clear what the funds can and cannot be used for. There's a lot less leeway, so we have to follow that. Teacher support with coordination and staff development. We use this funding for our summer reading program, supplemental language support, and required family involvement. So, with Title III, this projection is actually slightly, it's of the three title programs, this is the one that's slightly increased based on our English learner population. So, you can see $104,410 with an anticipated carryover of $15,000. Again, this, most of the title funds go to, I like to say, goes to, towards people and not as much stuff, right? So, we want to keep as many folks in the family as possible, so largely going towards salary. $8,000 towards summer reading program, $3,000 for EL-specific professional development, some supplemental language development material, so not core curriculum but supplement, $6,000. So, there's an allotment specifically for family engagement for our EL families, and then those indirect costs, which are the administrative costs. So, again, this evening, I wanted to provide you with information, and I will be back for seeking approval of this preliminary budget. I will know, you know, closer to September, what the actual amounts will be, and sometimes it's even a little bit past there, past September, when, you know, into October, when there can be a budget shift with, with these budgets. So, we, in the springtime, we do our best to take the numbers that were given preliminarily and plan for everything possible. So, if there's questions?
Any questions?
I have questions. For the Title III, there wasn't anything for funding required for the non-public school.
Correct. So, the non-public school has, can, has a choice to seek Title III funding or not. Every July, I meet with the principal, and we have a required agenda that we have to go through. And every year, we discuss what all the requirements are for Title III. That means a screening assessment. That means an end-of-the-year assessment, a whole language questionnaire. So, there's different things, and at, at this point, the school has now opted to seek those funds. But if they did opt to seek those funds, then I would budget for that.
And then, one other question. Can you just talk a little bit about, for the folks who might not know, how is the allocation determined? So, for Title I, Title II, and Title III, you're given a dollar amount that you start with.
Yep.
Where does that come from?
So, Title III is based on the number of students who qualify as an English learner in our district, and Title I and II funding is largely based on the number of students in our district and the number of free and reduced students who qualify for free and reduced. Thank you.
No one else? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Stay in there, aren't you?
[laughing]
Oh, yeah.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Each year, I come to the board to seek authorization, as the LEA statement authorization for title grants. So, I'll read this statement for you. "The local Board of Education of Columbia Heights Public Schools must authorize personnel at a monthly meeting to act as the local education agency representative. The LEA representative ensures the school district maintains compliance with appropriate federal statutes, regulations, and procedures, and acts as the responsible authority in all matters relating to the review and administration of Title I, II, and III plans. The recommendation is that myself, Director Stenwick, be the LEA, continue to be the LEA representative for the 2018-19 school year." So, again, this is bringing this to you for information, and I will be back on June 26 seeking action.
Questions? Okay.
My turn?
And next up is the summer camps. Thanks, Zena.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm happy to be here this evening with Jake Henderson, who is the Activities and Athletics Manager. We worked very closely together on setting up the summer sports camps. We create worlds of opportunity for every learner, whether it is during the school year or during the summer, whether it's in the classroom, or whether it's out on the athletic field or in our strength training room. And this evening, you'll hear in particular the core values of the community and collaboration, how we serve the community during the summer, and also how we collaborate between the departments, also with coaches, and also with neighboring communities. So, this is a grid. It took some, a lot of conversations with people to create what looks like such a simple little grid, but this really gives you an overview of the sports camps that we are offering this year. And Jake, before we go into this detail, do you want to describe a little bit about how this, how this benefits the athletes and the athletic department?
Yes, I'd love to. Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, thank you for having me. So, this, we collaborated a ton on this. Many meetings, many emails, many phone conversations. But we're really interested in seeing this grow, and we're excited to have this start, or this collaboration start here. It helps us out quite a bit in the activities, and we really see it as we get middle schoolers involved. Not only do they get an opportunity to try out new things, but it also kind of bridges that gap between middle school and then high school activities. Secondly, it builds their sport-specific skills. And third, we, we see it as something that can really grow our programs, all of our activities programs, and so we're excited to team with community education this summer. In particular, the strength camp, that's right outside my office, and so the last two mornings, it's been really great. I've seen lots and lots of middle school and high school students involved in that, I think 110.
110 registered.
And this is boys, girls, from every single different sport. And so, it's been really great to see, specifically, I saw some of the, the girls' 4x100 track members, which were awesome, by the way, this, this last spring season, and they're in there as middle school students trying to get better. So, it was really cool. I've had an opportunity to do some planks with them outside my office because we had some poor form going on, and so, it's, I think, we really pushed that program or that camp to all of our coaches so that we're really seeing our athletes grow, and they see really that this hard work is paying off hopefully next seasons.
And with the strength training, this is a great example of the collaboration. So, the strength training, the staff is paid for from a 20, our 21st Century grant that we use for Encore. And so, we've got great, consistent staff with that, taking attendance with the 110 students enrolled. There's the 8:00 to 9:30 a.m., 9:30 to 11:00, and also a collaboration with Inoka County Ship Funding. We are in the process of ordering close to $6,000 worth of equipment and supplies to be used this summer in strength training. Inoka County has really identified that out-of-school time that they want us to direct ship funding for. So, we're really excited about that, and, and such robust attendance. And then with our tennis camp, you're very familiar with the tennis courts being resurfaced right now. This was another example of collaboration. We're collaborating with St. Anthony, and so half of our programming is actually taking place at the St. Anthony Courts, and the other half is taking place at Columbia Academy during this summer. And then it's actually co-coached, one by our coach, and the other coach is with St. Anthony. So, really nice collaboration with St. Anthony's School District, and particularly their Community Ed Department and Athletics. Volleyball camp and summer league, and then the football camp. We've got a couple of days where middle schoolers are invited up, and then it's for the high school. I want to just mention the rates. Something that we did this year was we really looked to standardize the rates that we were charging, and in talking with other school districts, they ranged from $2.50 to $5 per time that a class, that a camp meets, or more, if the sport could sustain more. So, we chose to go with that bottom price of $2.50 per time that it meets, or if a student qualifies for free and reduced lunch, half that. So, then if a parent said, "Well, you know, why does this camp cost $10 and this camp costs $20?", we'd be able to say, "'Cause it meets twice as much." So, it's just, it's not based on the, you know, willy-nilly, but rather a really systematic approach to what we're charging. And then the registrations take place up here at our, through our Community Ed Department. So, that's a brief overview of the offerings for this So that's a brief overview of the offerings for this year, and we are hoping to expand this next year and really have that, just like we look for continuity in the academics, that continuity in activities and athletics. In addition to this, the superintendent mentioned about our summer Encore programming, which is happening during June for elementary and then during July for secondary. And of course, there's so many other offerings with that, including a dance camp, a musical theater camp, we have an aquatics program, but tonight, we're just here to talk about sports camps.
Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I think this is the, as a parent, this is the first year that my kids are involved in some of these. And I, just to encourage our parents of middle schoolers, that if your kids have aged out of some of the childcare programs, and you're kind of wondering, what is my kid going to do all day? Some of these camps are just really an affordable, exceptional way to keep them busy, off of their devices, maybe, and, and gaming, and move their bodies and be with their friends. So thanks for that opportunity.
I will say that Coach Townsend mentioned today, hey, you should not have cell phones in here, and I was like, all right, this is, this is great. And yeah, they're super involved. It's been really, really nice to see.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up will be the class size study.
I'm going to give Zena a break, so she doesn't, the only one talking this evening. Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, we're here to give a report on the annual Metro EXU class size study. And EXU is the Educational Cooperative Service Unit, for those of you who are wondering what that might be. Again, create worlds of opportunity for every learner at Columbia Heights. Today, we're talking about collaboration that focuses on excellence and collaboration. The class size study, the background of this, there are 36 school districts in the metro Twin Cities area that participate. And it's a measurement that we're going to review this evening, is region-wide class size averages for the last five years. It trends data from fiscal year '14 through fiscal year '18. And the class size data that we're going to present for the 2017-18 year, they're based on fall student counts, so that October 1st student count that is measured in so many different things. Student, or the study provides data in the categories of elementary, junior secondary, and then senior secondary. The process, it's conducted by the Metro EXU. It's an electronic format that they collect this data, and all metro superintendents are sent an invitation to authorize participation. Then they appoint a staff member, and then that staff member takes over the, the reporting. The district, the Metro EXU, compiles all the data from all of the different districts that participate, and then submit this study back to us. The limitations on this study, as every study, there are always things that are a little bit off, or, or things you have to consider as you're looking at the data. So the data, again, it's collected from the fall student counts, so it's a point in time. Consistent grade groupings have not been used for each district, so many districts in elementary won't go till sixth grade. And so what some districts qualify, or classify as elementary might start at fourth grade or at fifth, or stop at fourth grade or fifth grade. So there are some differences in that area. Also, all secondary and junior high levels don't offer all of the same topics and all of the same classes. And then finally, data, that was reported, some districts included special education students and some districts excluded special education students. I believe the Metro EXU is putting together a group this year to try and address these issues and become up with more consistency in the future. With that, I'll turn it over to Zena to talk about the graphs and the data.
Yeah, so we'll dive into the data. First, we're going to look at region-wide. So this is all of the 36 districts combined across the five years. There you can see some slight ups and downs across the, across the grade levels, K through five. And then combo or ungraded, which is like a multi-age classroom example there. So you can see a couple of the trends that we're seeing. This year, third grade reported a five-year low. However, going back to the graph, you can see under third grade, the numbers, it's really a fraction of a, of a student as the five-year low, really pretty flat in terms of consistency. Then the next graph is junior secondary. So again, for us in Columbia Heights, we have a middle school with grade six or eight. Some districts have junior highs with grade seven, seven and eight. And across the region, you can see there's, you may notice an outlier across the region there. So with arts, language arts, English, math, physical education, had a five-year high in class sizes, where the core subject areas are, have been consistently lower. So that's a trend we're going to see in our own district as well, with those core classes staying lower. So continuing with the region-wide for senior secondary, or high school as we would call it, here you can see consistently across, the outlier there with the music or band, so those band classes can be pretty big. So as I mentioned, the band is large. So what do we do in Columbia Heights for our guidelines? So here you can see, we look to pre-K to be about 20 students when we're staffing and enrolling kids. Our primary grades, so K1 and 2, as you can see, the range between 20 students and 24 students is what we, our guidelines are. Then intermediate grades, 3 through 5, 25 to 30. At the secondary level, it's really a 30 to 1 ratio that we, that we look for. And then our rule of thumb for elementary, because there is that range, is really overall to strive for that 24 to 1, with the younger student classes being a smaller size than the older students. So how did we fare this year in terms of class size? This, this data, we selected the March data because that was the data that we use for staffing, so it's the one that's not October. And so we just highlighted where we're slightly below that, that range. But you can see across the, across the schools in elementary, there's a, you know, there's a variety of, but still trying, striving to fall within that range of our rule of thumb there. So looking by division, so here you'll see Columbia Heights in the blue and just the rest of the region in the orange, by elementary, junior, secondary, which is our middle school, and then senior high. You can see that Columbia Academy or the, the middle school is slightly higher, and of course, we were able to respond to that by realizing that Columbia Academy was at capacity, and the board voted to close to open enrollment for Columbia Academy. Then how do we fare across the region, looking at some specific other school districts? So you can see elementary, junior, and senior high there, with Columbia Heights being the blue line on the left there. So we're not, we're neither the lowest nor the highest in terms of class sizes with our surrounding neighbor districts. So again, elementary average class size, this is broken down by grade. You can see, we have a variety here. Some are lower, some are the same, and there's a few grades that are higher. And that is reflective of our, as I mentioned before, our rule of thumb at keeping our younger kids in the smaller class sizes and allowing, so that we have that average of 24 to 1 across. Elementary by grade, as compared to our neighboring districts. Again, Columbia Heights is that, is on the, the blue stripe on the left-hand side. So you can, you can see, again, not the lowest across the district and not the highest across the, or across our neighboring districts either. So now moving to middle school, comparing Columbia Heights to the rest of the region. Again, we were able to respond to some of the higher class sizes by closing the school to open enrollment. And then looking at the senior high, you can see, as you look across, the core classes are either about the same or lower than the rest of the region, which means that our elective, some of our elective classes are higher than the region. We are, of course, though, through staffing, projecting some additional staffing to cover the number of students in those elective classes next year.
I think it's reassuring to see it, to just give people who are interested in our board and our staff just an understanding of where other districts are. So thanks for, for doing this and presenting it to us.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next up would be the 2018-19 budget.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I'm here to present the original fiscal year 2019 budget. This is an informational item, government's question, and the action item will be brought to the school board on June 26th. Again, we're here to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, is the mission of Columbia Heights Public Schools. This, the budget always is about community excellence, collaboration, and integrity, and what we're doing with, with the figures here. I wanted to review this evening, you know, we've talked a lot about budget throughout the year already, and, and had meetings with the school board about various things, and this is kind of the culmination of that work. The major budget assumptions for this year, we were conservative in our enrollment estimates. We are seeing a slight decrease at the elementary grades in the lower levels. And also with Columbia Academy being closed to open enrollment, we're anticipating a slight decline in the enrollment for next year at that level. We have, of course, the 2% increase in general education formula for revenues, but really all other revenues basically flat, no increases anticipated anywhere. We included the staff salary and benefit roll-ups for contracts that were settled. We put actuals, and then for not settled contracts, we estimated, based on board assumptions. We're increasing, we're anticipating an increase in the special education cross-subsidy. And then per our conversations and per board direction, we did make directions in expenditures and positions for this school year, for the next school year. This graph here is just an history of the ADM, the Average Daily Membership by grade level, and it's just to show kind of what's happening. The high, the top of the graph is your secondary, your high school. And then the bottom of the graph is really elementary. And way on the bottom, these are bad colors, the yellow is really the pre-K. So you can see in FY '17 and '18, we had about 100 students in the pre-K, and we're maintaining that enrollment for FY '19. But you can see in FY '19, we're anticipating a slight decrease in the elementary, and then also a slight decrease in the secondary. So the overall budget with the numbers, in your packet, there was a more detailed sheet, but this is the summary sheet that I'll talk of this, off of this evening. So the upper part of this slide is really where the general fund, fund is described, and that's where most of the activity happens for the school district. So the unassigned fund, we're anticipating that there will be a decrease in the fund balance of about $630,000. And then the restricted part of the general fund balance, so that's where the, the titles that Zena talked about, the compensatory, the long-term facility maintenance, the things that we get money for, but they're very strictly guided and they're very dictated on what we can spend it for. We're anticipating it'll, it'll be just slightly decreased in that fund balance. And so the overall general fund balance, we're looking at about $700,000 decrease from the projected end of this year to the end of next year. Food service, we are basically projecting that that will be breakeven, just a slight decrease. We're not anticipating, and we didn't come to the school board with any increase in costs for lunches next year. There's always a calculation that's done every year by the food service department based on MDE guidelines, and we're still within the guidelines of where we should be for our pricing. So there's no anticipated price increase. Community education, that's where the adult, adult basic ed is, early childhood, the programs that Kristen is in charge of, and we're anticipating just a slight decrease in that area. The building fund is where the capital projects levy is recorded, so that's where the levy is. That 60% goes to building, maintenance, and repair, and then 40% goes to technology initiatives, most of which is funded, the personal learning initiative that was discussed this evening. The debt service is where, of course, the debt service is for the outstanding bonds and leases. The dental fund, we're self-insured in this district, and this year, we did increase the revenue side of that. The last two years, we've had a decrease where the costs have been more than the premiums that we've brought in, so we did do a slight increase so that we would even out that fund again. And then lastly, the OPEB Trust Fund. That OPEB stands for Other, Other Post-Employment Benefits. And so that is where the retiree severance and health insurance costs are funded. And so the board, many years ago, put money aside, and that's managed by Wells Fargo. They come to the school district and, to the board and present on that each year. So that's very healthy fund still. So we're looking at, overall, for the entire district, about a $650,000 decrease in the fund balance. I wanted to show the fund balance slide that you saw at the end of the audit this year so that we could talk a little bit about that. So we were at the school board a couple of months ago, talking about what do we really want to do, and what, what is your direction? And it was to make expenditures and positions and in, and in regular expenditures, but maintain programs, and that our target would be to try and end the fund balance target at 7 to 8%. And we'll believe, we believe that we will get there, we'll be probably right around 7% at the FY, end of FY '19. And what that will look like is if you look at FY '16, which is the second one to the left, and FY '17, which is the last one on the right, it'll be right in between there. So there will be a decrease in the fund balance, but it will still be within the target of the fund balance policy for the school board. Any questions? That's a lot of numbers, but...
Questions?
Does this come as an action item?
It'll be in the action item for the June 26th board meeting.
No questions? Okay, thank you. Workers' compensation and insurance renewal.
The workers' compensation renewal came in this year. Again, this is an informational item that will be brought back to the school board on the June 26th board meeting. But basically, the renewal cost for next year is projected at $180,575, which is a 7.2% decrease. We've seen a decrease in our mod factor, which is down to 1.01. The mod factor is just a measurement of, against the industry standard of what kind of accidents that you have in your, your entity or your, your business. So last year, the premiums were approximately $195,000. This year, they're down to $180,575. So we will be coming back to the school board for action, for approval of the workers' comp policy on June 26th.
Any questions regarding that?
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Minnesota Safe Schools Resolution.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, before you, is information item, a resolution, that we hope to bring back as a governance, to the board as an action item at the next school board meeting. Everybody's aware of what's been happening in, in our nation, in schools, with schools, and the tragedies with the school shootings. There's been a lot of conversation in the recent months this year, to the biggest, most publicized shootings, one in Texas, one in Florida. There's been over 20 this year as a whole so far. That's on average, one a week, a little over one a week. So this has been a conversation in the community, I know, the conversation at the board level, and conversation at the management level, and about what a resolution would look like from our school board. And the community has come and asked for how, what the school board's going to do, and presented this evening as, as a resolution and a commitment to school safety and security that I would like to read, and... that I would like to read and hopefully bring back at the next board meeting with the board's approval. So, "Commitment to School Safety and Security. All students deserve a safe, welcoming, supportive, and school environment where they can learn, thrive without fear. No family should send a child to school in fear that the child may not come home. Therefore, in Columbia Heights Public Schools, we commit to a focus on school safety, or school, on a school-safe environment, and to provide safe and secure facilities for students and staff, and we commit to a strong collaborative relationship with local police, fire, and emergency responders, and we commit to a safe environment for students to ask questions and openly express their worries and concerns, and we commit to helping staff to identify students' needs, then making sure that students are connected to resources needed to help prevent students making a sudden tragic decision. And we commit to programs and services to support students' mental health, social and emotional learning, and combat bullying and harassment, and we commit to training for school employees in emergency preparedness. Now therefore be it resolved, the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board publicly affirms its dedication and commitment to the safety and security of all students, families, and the employees of, in our district." So that is the resolution. Any questions, comments, and, again, looking for permission to bring that back as an action item at the next board meeting?
So I'm wondering about, I remember in the board packet, we were sent two options, option A and B, and we were asked to respond to you, Dawn, about which one we preferred. Was there an overwhelming majority wanting one kinder or the other?
Yes. Based on the responses, the majority was for an option A. So that's the option that's being presented this evening.
Okay, and so option A was the one that said it's, we commit, that this resolution is to state our commitment to the safety, rather than, rather than option B, which was that we want to have administration come and look at other ways, or what more can be done? I'm trying to remember which...
I don't, I don't remember the exact language of option B, but based on the responses that we received, option A was, was the option that was more appealing to the board as a whole, so that's what's being presented tonight.
Okay. I don't remember which option A or B, which one it was, but I remember, I remember looking at this one, at the one that said that it's affirming our dedication, and thinking, okay, and that's not enough. And that we should go back and ask administration to look and see if there's anything else we can do. That was the option that I had chosen, so I just, I personally just want to be clear about that.
I would just like to, if I could, Mr. Chair, say that staff has been working on this at the will of the board. This is your resolution, and so therefore, I did say to both the chair and the vice-chair that if you would like to do additional work on that, that perhaps you would like to entertain a subcommittee of the board to continue to polish this so that it really is the board's work. This is merely a draft by the admin team based on wishes of the board. And what we heard, what we heard is what we tried to put together, but we're certainly open to not bringing it back, and you all forming a committee and polishing it, so it's exactly right for what you'd all like to see.
I'm open to what the group wants to do as a whole. I guess my, my understanding was that it was okay all the way down to the A or B choice. And then that was where it went out and said, and I don't know how many people responded, I know I responded, you know, and my comfort level was with them, and I know, could say, and I remember specifically why, because I don't remember the details, but I know when I read through it. But I guess, I don't know procedurally if this can be done, but if we can, because it's just the last statement is what's different, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Everything else is the same.
I think there's no question that we obviously support that we need, we want to make a statement. If we brought them both back, have that conversation as an action item, and made a decision on which one we want, can we do that procedurally? I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to leave the door open for, you know, does anybody else, I guess, maybe I'll stop and quit making suggestions, and others' comments about the choice that you were given and what your thoughts are?
I feel like there's always room for growth, and if we were to go with that option, it would be a declaration that this is a priority, and that we're looking for more growth, because no one's ever done growing, and we should always be looking for, for more, especially when it comes to student safety.
I think one comment I have regarding this too is, is I want us to all be very clear that by signing this resolution and enacting this, we, we make it a commitment. I mean, we have said the commit several times throughout this, including, you know, we affirm dedication and commitment, which I think that, that we all do want to have dedication and commitment to the safety and security of our students, but this can't just be words on a piece of paper. And so, we have to be prepared, moving this forward, then we are prepared to say, how? And what are we doing to do those things? And, you know, to make sure that, as a board, we've provided direction to Superintendent Kelly and the resources that are needed to make sure that we can have a commitment, and we're not doing lip service to a very important, to a very important need within our community. It's not enough just to commit to something, it, we have to stand behind it, and we have to show the action that goes along with it. So, just as we continue to discuss this, we have to be committed to it enough to provide the tools to make sure that this can happen.
And just to be clear, I'm not implying or saying that we're not committed to it. I'm saying, okay, but what's more? So if we're going to show more of a commitment, let's dig deeper and see what more we can do.
Does that ask have to specifically come in a resolution?
I would like for it to.
I'm just, I'm just wondering here, as far as the, these, these commitments, first of all, I thank you so much. This is, this is definitely speaking from the heart, and I'm very, very glad to see this coming forward and us having discussion. But I think it would not be, it would probably be in our best interest is, anything that is in these, is in this resolution here that is moving forward, is that we are also linking it back to, you know, just like when we look at our core values, that we would also be able to point to, this is, the resolution would be, I guess, more like a founding document. Maybe that, is that going too far? Is saying that that's part of our, that this is our core, this is a core principle here? And being able to link it back, am I, do you understand what I'm trying to say? Or am I just kind of fumbling all over the place? I do that sometimes, I don't know if you caught that.
I'm struggling to understand what you're saying.
Right, okay, thank you. You know, we, our core principles, you know, integrity and respect and everything, we also would have our safety as well, and then this would link to our, you know, to supporting our, our schools, our commitment to school safety and security. That way, we can, we can have a checkpoint, check, this is what we're working on, because we do have all these initiatives that come forward, our trauma, trauma-informed practices, our bullying policies, the different interventions that we're doing, you know, to be able to link it to this, and then what else can we bring into it, a new program?
I'm wondering how...
I'm trying to figure out, it's like, I don't, I don't want to, it's never going to be 100% perfect, and I just want to make sure that we can start with our commitment as soon as possible. I don't want to keep putting it off.
Yeah, I'm wondering how, I think we all agree that this is a great idea, and I think the question we're asking is, what's the call to action upon signing a resolution, right? And I think that kind of makes me ask the question, you know, what's behind a resolution? Is that more of a policy thing, that we're asking for some, you know, ongoing action with regard to student safety? How does that, how does that, how does that all interact? I think that's my question, if we're asking administration to do something on an ongoing basis. Does that make sense? And I agree with Lori and, yeah, I think we all agree that school safety is an important issue, and I hear that in our, from all of our, from our superintendent and from our directors, and I do think there's a deep passion to do that. But where's the call to action? Does that come in a resolution? Does that come in a policy decision? Does that come in us just asking for a report back? I think that's, that's the question I'm asking, because we can discuss the language of a resolution, but if it's not the best way to call something to action, I'm wondering, then what is and what's reasonable?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think this summarizes kind of where we're at and what we're doing. And I think that, no disrespect or anything, but what you're saying would bring us to that next level. And I think that what I see here is our, you know, it's, it clearly lays out some of the ways that our staff are continuously looking at what they're doing to make sure students are staying safe, and how we're connecting families and teachers to resources that need to be there. And so I think, I'm okay with this. I think that a lot of work has gone into it, and I don't want to see admin have to spend more time, because I think we've discussed this so many times.
And I would agree. You know, I think initially, I guess, my impression of the request for this was as much for the board to stand up and make a statement that we're not okay with this, and, you know, we're going to be committed to making sure we can do everything we can. I never personally took it to be that we were going to, and I get what you're, I understood what you're getting at, Lori, was...
Oh, thank you.
You've got your strategic roadmap, and then within that, you've got your little bullet points of how you're going to different, do your different things. I think there's probably a lot of these things are already helping, and we could certainly be committed to build on them more. There's a security plan for the district that is not going to be stuck on the website for very obvious reasons, reasons to demonstrate that we're doing these things, you know, to make sure students and staff are safe. So, and I agree with, I want to remember who said it now, but when it was Molly, when you start talking about, you know, we're committed to identifying students in need, making sure that they get connected with the resources. So there's some things that are in there that they're saying, I don't know, you change the word commit? I mean, do we know as a group that when they say they're committed to, number one, we're going to build on what we're already doing? What's the purpose of the resolution? I guess a long-winded answer of, I took it as more of, we're making a statement.
As a board, we're committed to these things, and that's the way I'm looking at it. It's kind of that overarching vision that we have for our district.
I was just going to back it up, because the original ask from the community member was that we have a resolution, and with the call to action, that we were going to move this forward to state and federal officials and all of that. And then, as the board talked about it, it said, no, perhaps what we need to do is reaffirm our commitment in these areas. That was, was the next direction to the admin. And so, and then the discussion that was had, kind of, sort of, was, are we going to, are we going to take an action? And I think you guys decided that, yes, you would like, in the form of a resolution, to show a commitment to. I think that that's the, I just wanted to make, that's how we've been working toward it from the original request. And so the original resolution really was more to send this on to other elected officials and saying, but that call to action was changed, and it was a commitment. So this, what the admin team developed was a commitment to the things that we are doing already, and the importance so that people in the district could see that we are doing things, and that we commit or we recommit to these things. And that's where it's developed. If you're looking for something else in a foundational document, or if you're looking at some policy things, that warrants probably a larger conversation at a work study, in my mind. It's up to you all, but I'm thinking that you may not change that by changing just the A or B statement at the end of that. It's really a direction, and this was a community ask, so, a community member ask. And so, I just wanted to make sure we remembered the framework of which, from which this...
And I think, you know, one of the things I do want to comment on this too is, you know, and Superintendent, thank you, because I think, you know, what we have to look at is what the end game is here and what the goal is. And, and what I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Member Samray, but I think what, what we want to make sure is that, one, we publicly comment about what our commitment is, but that it doesn't end there. So, whether or not it's in, you know, this resolution, I think as a board, we can't be complacent and say what we're doing is enough, that we have to, when you have a commitment to something, it means that it's continually being explored and approved upon and evaluated as to whether or not you're, you're effective. And so, you know, I think, again, looking at what the, the reason for this is, we're not looking at this to provide specific direction to the administration, it's, we're affirming our commitment, which will then in turn guide direction and expectations and policy moving forward.
And it's on us as leaders, right? And this is where we talk about governance as vision setters to keep this in the forefront of the discussion. So I think we could ask for safety concerns, and this is a culture of violence in schools to be a board topic, or not a board topic, a work session, agenda item, you know, so we don't lose track of it either.
Well, I mean, Superintendent Kelly, I appreciate you giving the history of how this came about, and that it was a community member who asked for us to make a call for action to policymakers. And in our work session, we talked about how we really can't influence what our policymakers, what our lawmakers are doing, and it's better for us to turn to what we can do. And I really appreciate all the work that you've put into these resolutions, and sending them back, and you coming back over and over and over again. And I'm not trying to belabor any of this. We had an option A and an option B. There was an option. There was a second option. And what I'm saying is, if we are committed, all of this is the same, it's just that last part, if we are truly committed and our words mean something, let it not stay and end with that we just want to say we're committed. Hey, by the way, FYI, let it be, and we want administration to continue to be looking, because where we are is not enough. Why? Not because I know there's any lapse anywhere, but we always have room for improvement. We always have room for improvement, and that's where I stand on it, and that's why I would like it to be the other option, where in the very end, it says that we're asking administration to continue to keep on looking for ways to improve safety.
I guess I'd have to see option B again, Brian, but my understanding is, as you pointed out initially, is we were all given the choice of A or B, and the majority of the group was the one that stays before.
Correct.
So, with that being said...
And I appreciate that, but I was asking about that, because our contacting Dawn about that was not something that happened in a meeting, so I was just wondering if there was like a mistake or something like that, because it seemed a little bit different.
We could certainly put that on our next work study, and you guys could talk about it a little bit more in depth and have both statements, because that would still give it an actionable timeline before we have our next business meeting.
Yes.
I would throw that out as well. I want to warn you in advance that our work study, that our next work study is, is long.
Two hours, two and a half hours, with the stuff we have on, I know.
Yes, but I, that is an option, if you want to get this done in June. If you don't, then we don't meet in July, so we could, we pick it up in August, but there's still, I'm just trying to throw out process ideas for you, it's entirely up to you all. But it seems at this point, we're kind of to, what does the board really want to, what does it want to be?
And I'm just going to go back and say again, I, I do feel like this last statement encompasses continuing to look more, that that is our practice here in Columbia Heights Public Schools. So I feel like that does include that.
Okay. And what we're saying.
I was okay with either one. I absolutely hear what you're saying. I'm, but I agree that, I think this is, this encompasses this, and that we as vision setters need to make sure this stays on the cusp of our discussion, just like we need to make sure that spending stays... just like we need to make sure that spending stays on point and we need to guard that, that, that fun balance and all the different things. And I'm not saying they're necessarily, student safety is a big topic, but.
This wouldn't be voted on until the 26th, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess my suggestion would be if the group is okay with this, is maybe put both A and B back in the, your packet this week. And we have a, I, I won't say brief relax, as long as it takes, but quick conversation, A or B, general, flavor four, make the decision and then bring it back at the end of the month. And then we can vote on the resolution there so that everybody is seeing both of them again. I remember reading, I don't remember what it said, but I remember going, this one I think is, for me, was a great choice. So if we can do that, if the group is okay with that, that's, it's not like we have to rewrite the entire resolution. We're really talking about the.
No, they're already.
The A and B, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you guys are okay with that, have it on the, on the agenda for the work session. You know, as a discussion of, you know, for the, for the resolution, we can have that discussion.
At the work session.
At the work session, correct. So we can still bring it back.
We can know what we're voting on.
And we can still bring it back at the end of the month. We'll get a general feel for it, bring it back. And if we, it needs to have more discussion at the actual board meeting, we can do that as well. But at least we'll have had one more look at it individually and then a conversation as a group. Sorry, Brian?
That's all right.
You're doing great, Brian.
Happy to bring it back.
Thank you. You're doing great.
Thank you.
You're doing awesome dealing with us.
Everybody, everybody okay with that approach?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
We're going to move on to our action items. The first one is adding a school board meeting date in August. And I'm going to let the superintendent have a conversation about that.
As much as I know that we all enjoy meetings, we've had one of our meetings preempted by the, the August 14th primary. And that usurps everything, so we cannot have a school board meeting that night. And therefore it would leave us with a vast from the end of June till almost the third week in August to conduct school business. And where there's a rub is that we are continuing the hiring practices. There are things that come up that if we have a bunch of people on hold for contracts, that they could very well go to another district. And so we probably really need to have that earlier meeting. And so the suggestion was to have an August 7th, it's a Tuesday, meeting in lieu of our August 14th meeting, which is usurped by the primary election.
I think that makes, makes sense.
I have a really big problem with that. And it's because August 7th is National Night Out.
Oh, it's.
And so that is just such an opportunity for us to engage with our community members. And there's a lot going on. So I would propose something else. And whether we, you know, and listening to your rationale, you know, originally I was going to come in and say, can we, you know, on the 21st, we have our work session, you know, can we do both? But if that's too late, then I think we need to look at, you know, either Monday, the August 6th, or, I mean, do we have to have it on a Tuesday? Can we say Wednesday, August 8th? Or, you know, I just, I don't know, but I just.
Crazy here.
I know, I know.
The last Tuesday in July?
Saturday afternoon?
Yeah, I mean, the last Tuesday in July.
People are not going to be.
Yeah. I don't think people will be here. But, but like I said, that, that's National Night Out.
Or could we do it earlier in the day?
Yeah, could we do it earlier?
If, if we start like 4:30 or something? 4:00? I don't know.
You guys can. I, I'm the National Night Out host for my block, so.
So that starts pretty early.
What time does that actually start?
Our party starts at 6:00.
Yeah, I'm just not, I don't just, but generally.
It's, it can depend. I mean, people start at 4:00, 5:00 and go to 8:00 or 9:00.
Certainly not before 5:00. The, the vehicle, I mean, when you start your party, I'd say the parties, when the police and fire vehicles are all started at about 6:00.
Could we do like a 3:00?
Could we do an early meeting for those who are available, that then, and keep it brief? Or do we have, do we have a lot of agenda points?
You're probably going to, you're probably going to have an agenda and I can't guarantee you how brief that's going to be. It's really up to the board. If you want to try it on a Wednesday, we just picked it because the community is used to us meeting on Tuesdays.
Completely agree.
And so the last week of July is not going to work because we don't have staff here to meet with you. And so I would be happy to, because I'm going to be here, but we have some of the other staff that is not going to be here. So if you wanted to move it to that Wednesday, as long as we post it, well, not in advance, we're fine. And when we were looking at this alternate date, we did not know that was National Night Out. So I would certainly agree with you there on that. So we, we would like a meeting and so it's like, how does Wednesday, the 8th look?
Well, I think if, if we can't do, keep it really short for the absolutely time-sensitive, urgent things on Tuesday, if we did it early, then let's go to Wednesday. And then from now till Wednesday and us posting it, that's enough notice for the public.
It is.
And I mean, this is a very good reason.
To move it to Wednesday. An election and National Night Out are two.
Yeah, they're two really important things.
Causes to alter our schedule. I think it's not.
And we're giving enough notice.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing Wednesday, August 8th. So I'm hearing that also means that the agenda can't be cut to like five minutes. On Tuesday. I'm just kidding. The horror on your face.
Yeah, near me. I mean, and I think in fairness, you know, it could be briefer, but I think that if people are really hosting those things and if some of us want to get out to some of those things, then it's probably not the best. And when we were looking at that, we really did not know.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even attempt to do it on Tuesday. I would just change it to Wednesday. Then you don't have to try and make it brief or shorten it up. And so that's our, we just need to change, and we can still pass that tonight.
Yes, you can.
7:00 PM on August 8th.
The board's going to be asked to approve official meeting for August 8th, same time as opposed to August 7th. Any, we'll start with.
Would you like me to make a motion to?
Since you already had the discussion before, a motion in our second?
Yep, sorry. Make, make a motion to.
Let's start with a motion, if I could, from someone.
I'd like to make a motion to move our August 14th meeting to August 8th.
The, the new motion is already on the table.
Well, you second it.
You can second it. You want to second it?
Uh, sure, second.
Do we need any more discussion, conversation? I think it's an excellent idea. The, the National Night Out is huge from a public safety standpoint, from an opportunity to get out to meet your neighbors, whether you're hosting it or you're going to the parties in your neighborhood or just going around and visiting. So, yeah, again, not realizing it, because we had the conversation about moving it to 7th. And I probably shouldn't have known that as well, so thank you for pointing that out. So with that being said, if there's no further discussion, for moving the meeting, having the meeting on August, Wednesday, August 8th at 7:00 PM, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Strongly encourage you to add that in your calendars. That would be Hala, and then we had Lori second it.
Hala swooped in while Lori was trying.
I missed it for the record.
Hala was helping keep the meeting moving forward.
I was like.
Yeah, that's, let's keep this meeting. We're going to move on to.
Thank you, Lori.
Board policies, second reading. I gotta find my list. The list of the policies appeared on May 22nd, meeting for review, approved harassment violations, student dress and appearance, enrollment of non-resident students, student standard, grade promotion, grade retention and accelerated grade promotion, bullying prohibition policy, protection and privacy of pupils' records, student disability, non-discrimination, policies incorporated by reference, violence prevention, application to student staff, hazing prohibition in kindergarten, early entry. This being the second reading, the other being out there. Superintendent Kelly, has there been any comments or input at this point?
Your members haven't received nothing through our office.
Okay. Hearing that, if I could get a motion, move that forward.
I'll move it.
Molly? Laura? Molly, motion. Laura, second. Discussion.
And so just to clarify, these have already been through the policy subcommittee?
That we did in the committee, then we have come back here for a first reading, so it's available to the public to look at and ask questions and things like that. And then come back for the second reading to move it off to next year. Comes up again. Good question. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We are going to go into a closed session. I'm sure you guys are disappointed about that over there. Have to get out of here. In accordance with Minnesota statute 13D.03, the board will meet in a closed session for the, for the item on the agenda for the purpose of discussing, discussing negotiation strategy.
In the building?
As we get our thumbs up, we'll start. We, at 9:35, will be coming out of our closed session. Just an overview of the meeting. It was a discussion, discussing negotiation strategies. And we'll go on to board topics.
Have a great summer to the staff. We're getting a little break here. Wrapping up.
Who else? Meeting adjourned, 9:35.